I apologize for that. I didn't know, I didn't realize I was muted. We'll call, let's call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, it looks like everyone's muted, so be sure to unmute yourself when we're ready to, when you need to speak. Do we have any additions to the agenda today? Hearing none. Then I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Did you catch that, Janelle?
Second.
Was that, uh, lit, okay. Lit and ties, ties will second it, perfect. And we'll vote by roll call. Yea or nay, voter? Yea. Stephen McPatten?
Yea.
McNeely?
Yeah.
Butterfield?
Yea.
And Dodge is a yea. Motion carries five zero. That will move us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion?
I just have a minor change to the November 23 minutes. It should say $10,000 for Mayor Lutheran High School instead of 1,000.
Perfect, okay. Anything else? I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda with that one change.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Voter?
Aye.
Stephen McPatten?
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five zero. Maggie, that'll take us to truth and taxation, please.
Okay. Can everybody see this? Well, my presentation? Okay. So, mayor and council and residents in front of you, tonight is the truth in taxation for the 2021 budget, general fund budget. Just a little overview about how we establish the budget preliminary is due in September. So we did set that on September 28th, 2020, and then we sent it to the county on September 30th. The final 2020, 21 budget, we will do the truth and taxation meeting right now, and then council will consider passing the final levy tonight if no further changes are needed. And then the city will get the levy certification to Carver County by December 31st. So, as you know, are aware, there's two primary, primary business functions for the city. It's the general government, which is the general fund, and then there's utilities, which is the enterprise funds. So general fund is supported by state aid fees, fines and permits, and also property taxes. So that goes to pay for administration, building inspections, debt service, elections, engineering, police, fire, planning, legal, and much more. Enterprise is your sanitary sewer, your storm water and your water fund, and those are paid for with strictly through monthly utility bills and new development connection fees. So a little bit of the budget process explained here. So we start the process pretty early. So staff prepares draft budgets in June and through August, then the budgets are reviewed and worked on through with council from August to September. Again, preliminary tax levy and budget are certified to the county or determined in September and then sent to the county at the end of September. That allows for additional budget review in October and November. Truth and taxation is when we allow public input, that's this evening, and then the council needs to do their final budget adoption again by December 31st. So resident, as you know, residents receive preliminary property tax statements, so they can kind of assess what their, their, what they, what a preliminary look for their tax statement will be for the next year. Truth and taxation again invites residents to comment, and then final budget adoption is, is, is done when council feels confident that they've reached a satisfactory budget. So I'm just to start, here's a little history of tax rates within the city of Mira going back to 2011. And as you can see, we've been gradually reducing our tax rate. Our preliminary was set at 54.7. That is because that we had a lot of unknowns yet in September that we needed to work through. And now, tonight, the proposed final levy is 48.9%. As part of that final tax levy, we do, the city does levy debt for, I mean levy for, to pay for its debt. This is a schedule of our. You have any questions on it? These are all pretty, pretty standard from year to year. We do have the proposed fire station on here as a, as a expenditure for next year if it goes through. We also have a fire tanker, a five-year loan that we approved this year as well. So, general fund operating expenditures, this is kind of a breakdown of where we're at for operating the general fund. This includes staff and all the departments that, for the city. As you can see, general government, public safety, public works, park and rec, compost and operating EDA. We have an increase of about 75,000 from last year, and then that shows a breakdown of which area makes up each of the budget sections. So this just shows the difference between last year and each of those categories. So that's our expenditures. Now we're on to revenue. So we anticipated 20 to 25 housing starts in 20, we are anticipating 20 to 25 housing starts in 2021. We kind of go more conservative with our numbers just because we just don't always know. Last, this year to date, we've gotten 30, and then usually the last few years, we've, we've been a little bit above 30. So, uh, local government aid has increased about 13,000 from last year. General fund revenues, so beyond, besides, uh, local government aid, we, our budget is supported by property taxes as well as fees and licenses, grants, and fire contracts that we have with the township, and then just other small, other revenue sources. In last year, we developed a capital levy account, accounts where we pulled capital funds out of the general fund just to keep them separate, so we can levy them strictly to put directly into these capital accounts. So this year, I'm just showing you the proposed changes for the different accounts. What we are planning to do this year is when we do our final audit, we will determine the excess funds from the, this year's budget, and we will, according to our policy, we will then transfer the leftover money into these funds, the street, street funds and park funds. That'll, that'll be determined at a later date, but that's kind of what our decision is at this time to make sure we still have a good balances in those funds in 2021. But that's kind of where our recommendation for the, just the levy portion is this year. This gives a breakdown of our taxes levy for general, what that's the amount we need for, to levy for property taxes for our general account, taxes levied for our capital, and then taxes levied for our debt. So that's a total of $1,254,596, oh, sorry, $1,254,596.11. And then we do receive fiscal disparities, and that then subtracts off to get our actual levy. We do, we are provided with a actual tax capacity from the county. We do contribute some to fiscal disparities, so we, and so we do subtract off that. So you take the, the new levy divided by the actual adjusted tax capacity to get your rate, and that's where we get So just a little bit of factors. We did see a, in our assessment, our growth for the city was that, was at 2.29%. That's quite a bit lower than other years. I think last year we were around eight to nine percent, but there's, there's a lot of reasons. It's just market for this year was a little bit slower than last year. We did have 30 new homes this year. So, if you look compared to last year, we're actually, for our preliminary, we were at, our tax rate was proposed at 5.29% higher than last year, but the final proposed budget is actually, we're seeing a decrease of 0.45%. And then other districts that you'll see on your tax statement are Carver County School District and others special planning districts. This just shows kind of the market change, the growth from, growth change from last year. This is just showing how the tax rate is calculated. Our preliminary versus our proposed final. These are, this is kind of our comparisons from our final rates from 2020, kind of where we stand compared to other cities in Carver County. And then finally, I provide, provided a kind of a calculation of property taxes for a house whose estimated market value is about 300,000. So I showed the preliminary versus the final. So it just kind of shows where your monthly services are and what their, what your taxes are going for on a monthly basis. And with that, that concludes the, my presentation for truth and taxation. I included in your packet is a, is a letter from a resident expressing concerns about the preliminary tax rate and kind of the, just kind of suggestions on how to maybe working on having the process be that of being closer to the final in the future. So with that, I will take any questions for truth and taxation.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from council or the public on truth and taxation? No questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Maggie. And again, thanks for all your work on, on the budget over these last few months to get that down and actually decrease it. Job well done. So with that, then we'll move to 7A1. The general, general fund adoption of the budget.
Okay, so, um, with truth and taxation, that, that really captured the process that we did this year. I did include, starting on page 60, my budget summary, that kind of highlights the preliminary tax levy, the preliminary final information on the final tax levy, and how, how we got to where we're, where we are at. We had a number of goals for 2021 that we discussed this year. Again, it just goes over just the, the process and kind of our historical rates and kind of, and again, the process of getting to the 48.9%. So with that, I will, I am available to answer any questions, but again, the, the tonight, we are looking at the adoption of the 2021 budget that was presented in the truth and taxation meeting, and then also in my report. So with that, resolution 12.14.20.52 highlights the, but the overall budget for, that includes general fund capital and debt, and then our revenue, our proposed revenue sources for 2021.
Thank you. Any questions for Maggie? And hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 12.14.20.52, adoption of the 2021 budget.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote via roll call. Voter?
He is having audio issues. I know he's, I know he's in, but I don't know if his audio is working right now.
So what do we do with that? Do we?
Can we have him type in his response?
Is he on?
He is on. Eric, if you can hear us, can you, um, can you type in the message box? Um, we can just move on until he gets back on, and we can just make a note in the minutes that he was having technical difficulties. Unless you wanted.
Just take about, take about with four then?
Yeah.
All right, we'll see if he can, if he can hear us, and then he might type in. He might type in as we move on, so, okay. So we'll skip council member voter for now with his audio issues, and we'll move to Stephen McPatten.
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries four zero. All right, Maggie, that'll take us to the.
The levy.
He needs to be, can you let him back in, Maggie?
He, it doesn't show him trying to get back in. Does it show?
He just sent me a text. He just sent me a text telling me he's waiting to be let back in.
Interesting. Um, it's not showing on my list that he is in the waiting room.
Okay.
I'll keep an eye out, though, if it shows up.
All right. Yep. All right, let's move to the adoption of levy resolution 12.14.20.53.
Okay, so this resolution is the levy that we will send to Carver County, and will be the total taxes collected. It breaks down the general fund, capital fund, debt service funds. This is shown in this resolution under tax, where our revenues are for taxes. So again, this is just approving that we will certify this levy to the county for that dollar amount.
Okay. Any clarification needed on this? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 12 dash 14 dash 20 dash 53, adoption of the 2021 levy for $1,254,597.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll vote via roll call again. Stephen McPatten?
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries four zero. All right, Maggie, let's move to the enterprise fund, enterprise fund's budget adoption.
Okay, so similar to, so Mayor Dodge and council, and we're discussing the final adoption of the enterprise funds for 2021. Just a little background, going off of our truth and taxation, this is, this enterprise fund is funded through service utility bills and connection fees. In 2018, the city conducted a utility rate study based on future projects that are needed in the water sewer and stormwater systems to pay for the future projects and maintain the cost of day-to-day operations. That study stated that the city would need to, on a yearly basis, currently increase at 3% to adjust for inflation. That's something that we do look at and at, on a annual basis to see if it's necessary. But that is something that we will be discussing later today if it works out. So, a little bit about the water fund. Fund, the day-to-day operation, maintenance and debt service for 2021 is projected to be $575,943.50. That's a decrease of about $92,808.50. That's because we, in 2020, we had a sign, quite a few projects within the water department. So we were able to reduce some of the engineering costs for this upcoming year. Debt service payments also went down a little bit as well. So the prop, the projected revenues based on the 2018 study is about $777,564.77. There's a breakdown later in the, in the packet that breaks up with revenues come from with users and connection fees. Any, so as you can see, the revenues are over the projected expenditures, and anything that is in excess will be put into the capital fund for future projects. Sewer fund is projected to be at $909,488.95. That is an increase of $9,747.95. The increase that we're seeing is kind of in the wages and benefits section. That's also in the water fund, but it's just offset by the reduction in engineering. There was also a significant increase in engineering section of the budget because there's a feasibility study being done related to the operations of the wastewater facility next year. So the projected revenues, according to the study, are $1,028,883.44. And again, any excess revenue will be put in the capital project fund. So again, in your packet is the expenditures and projected revenues that we're all going to be approving tonight. It's just the breakdown. So, included in your packet is resolution 12 dash 14 dash 20 dash 54, resolution adopting the 2021 enterprise fund budgets.
Thank you. Any clarification needed on the enterprise funds? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 12 dash 14 dash 20 dash 54, resolution adopting 2021 enterprise fund budget.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Eric, are you back on? No?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll vote via roll call. Voter?
Aye.
Stephen McPatten?
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an eye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Um, and Maggie, that'll take us to seven B, one site plan approval for 124 Ash Avenue.
Okay, uh, Mayor and Council in front of you this evening is an applicant, uh, an application for, um, site plan review approval for 124 Ash Avenue North. This was submitted by the owner of the property and actually requested is to approve, um, or deny a site plan review for a coffee shop to be located in the existing building at 124 Ash Avenue North. It is also requested that three off-street parking stall requirements be waived for this use. Um, little background, um, this property is designated commercial on the future land use map and the, a coffee shop is consistent with that designation. The property is zone C2 central business district and a coffee shop is permitted within that district. Uh, there have been no comments from the public at this time. The, um, planning commission did hold a public hearing. Um, the applicant uh, has submitted, I'm sorry, they did not hold a public hearing. They just had a, their own site plan review. I apologize. Um, the applicant has submitted the application for a site plan review for the coffee shop. The property currently contains an existing building which was formerly known, uh, used as an old bank. Um, any vehicle access to the site would come from the alley while pedestrian traffic would come from the sidewalk on Ash Avenue North. There would only be changes to the interior. Um, there would be no exterior, um, improvements at this time. They, the applicant has stated that they are hoping that most of the customers at this time would be walk-up customers with, um, future planning for eight, uh, approximately eight avail, or seating for eight people. Um, they are also proposing to construct a temporary storage unit on the north part of the property as an accessory structure. It's proposed to be two hundred eighty-eight square feet and it would be constructed out of pine. Um, it would meet the setbacks um, that they, the, uh, according to city code. Um, it's consistent with other surrounding properties, um, within the downtown district. Uh, as part of the site plan review, uh, or as part of the process, a site plan review is required. Um, and as, and with this review, it consists of a review of off-street parking, a review of the, uh, proposed accessory building and the exterior of the property. Um, the site plan was submitted and shows the existing building and the proposed accessory structure. It also shows three potential parking stalls with access to the alley. Uh, we'll go into that a little bit in a little bit more detail, that parking. At the October twentieth, twenty twenty planning commission meeting, the planning commission did table the site plan review. Uh, they did review it again on December first, at which they did vote five zero to recommend approval of the site plan. So with any new business and mayor, off-street parking is looked at and is calculated. So it is classified, uh, the coffee shop is classified as a restaurant, so meaning the code requires one space for every three seats. Uh, therefore, um, with eight seats, that would require three off-street parking stalls. Um, they did propose three stalls as an angle parking off of the alley, but it was determined that that would not be, that would not work because then they would have, it would be, um, one-way drive-in and then they would have to pull out on through the highway and that's, it just wouldn't work that way, um, work out well. So, um, um, so what the applicant has come up with is that, uh, they're requesting from council to be exempted, exempt from any off-street parking stalls since there are existing, um, off-street, on-street parking, um, stalls available in the downtown area. Uh, with, um, so with that, um, they did recommend that they could do, they could create two stalls for staff off of the alley that would be perpendicular, um, but otherwise any other parking would be, um, on-street, downtown. They're not proposing any landscaping, uh, the outdoor stores. They're not proposing anything, but they, the, but staff is creating a condition of approval that would include a trash enclosure that should be provided on-site. Um, other items include, um, they would have to pull a permit if they are going to do any signage and then they would have to meet all general lighting code as well. But with the site plan review, there are, um, nine conditions, um, that are being recommended at this time in the resolution. They're highlighted also in your memo from the city planner. At this time, um, possible actions are to approve the site plan subject to the conditions, table the site plan review or deny the site plan review. Um, if you have any questions, please let me know, but in, included in your packet is resolution 12 dot fourteen dot twenty dot fifty-five explaining, um, what I just went over, as well as the conditions that are being proposed.
All right, thank you.
Just to be clear on something, um, they're not, they're not intending to ever have a drive-through. Uh, that was discussed and it was determined that because of the light pole there and the way the situation is in the back with the alley, that they will never, uh, propose a drive-through, possibly a walk-up window, maybe. But right now they have that window closed up on the side and they don't even intend to do that. Just clarifying that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from Maggie? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 12 dash fourteen dash twenty dash fifty-five approving the site plan for the coffee shop located at 124 Ash Avenue with the nine conditions.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. A second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Voter?
Aye.
Stevie McPatten?
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an eye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And Maggie, that'll take a seven D one Public Works Department lead position.
I apologize. Uh, my memo is out, my, some of my documents are out of place. It's actually the 2021 street improvement project, which is correct on the agenda.
Oh.
But I apologize, they're just out of, out of order in the packet. Um.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So I'm gonna let, um, Dave and Jeff go into a little bit about, a little bit more about this. We did go over this at the last city council, um, workshop meeting. Uh, it was, we did provide, um, some information about the assessment breakdown based on our policy. Um, tonight we are providing additional information, um, based on that discussion that included if the city would be able to, um, reduce the assessments a little bit by, um, taking on some of the enter, or some of the, yeah, water and, um, storm fees for, in the assessment breakdown. Um, so with that, I will let Dave or Jeff go into a little bit more detail and I can provide some more detail on what the financial advisor stated.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Jeff. It looks like you're muted.
There we go. I'm off mute. Can everybody hear me? Okay, thank you. Uh, Dave got caught at another meeting late tonight, so he just called me and asked me to jump on. Uh, as Maggie said, uh, we presented the draft report a couple of weeks ago and we, we were directed to look at options to potentially bring down the assessments. So what we did, the memo in front of you shows, um, per policy, so that per policy is, is really the draft memo you saw two weeks ago. I did go back and look at our costs and thought, eh, maybe we're being a little too conservative here and there. So I did bring down the costs a little bit. Um, and then we, we looked at, uh, options for reducing the assessment and the first option was just, um, taking out the water main and water service costs and, and billing that strictly to, um, the water fund. So there would be no assessments, um, for the water portion. And what that does is that increases city costs by about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, but then it lowers the assessments by a hundred and forty. So then we looked at another option. So if, if that wasn't enough, well, what, what's another option? Well, we could, um, the city could pay for fifty percent of the curb instead of assessing a hundred, they could assess fifty. We could pay for that out of the storm sewer fund. So that resulted in another additional thirty-three thousand to the city. And if that wasn't enough, because we did still have a few of those corner lots that were pretty high. So we looked at, well, what can we do to, to lower these assessments that are still pretty high? And we thought, well, why don't we cap the corner lots at seventy-five feet? So by doing that, that adds another twenty-four thousand dollars to the city. So those were the three different options we looked at. Um, uh, your thoughts? Any questions, direction?
No, um, I can give you a little, I was trying to provide another update, um, information to you. Um, yeah, so what I did was I did talk with the financial advisor on, um, if it, if it's feasible, uh, to absorb some of these assessments and, um, not impact our, the, are the health of our funds. And, uh, he did do a review and was comfortable, um, with the city, uh, being able to take on tho, those additional assessments. Um, which I, I think would make sense to, again, with our goal in mind of reducing the assessments for residents. Um, so, uh, let's see. Yeah, so, um, I guess, uh, to move forward, we would just need a little bit more discussion from council on, um. And as you can see in the packet, it shows all the different scenarios and how it affects the assessments then. So just a little bit more, uh, discussion on, I guess, comfort level as far as which, which route we want to pursue, I guess.
So Maggie, do, do we have a good handle on how much some of these corner lots have already paid with some of the old, uh, upgrades that we did on the east side there? I, I thought there was some discussion that some of them are, they got captured on the previous ones?
Yeah, I did speak with the engineer about that. Um, I, I need to get those numbers from him. I think he, from our discussion, what I remember is that they, they were, I, I guess I don't want to quote anything because I don't know. Um, yes, there were some properties that did have assessments. I can get you those numbers after the meeting. I just don't have them at this time. I apologize.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, that's a piece I need. I mean, for me, my intent would be to try to keep these residential assessments fairly similar, um, you know, to the amounts that others have, that others have paid or, or others have been assessed, other residents from other projects or, or the other east side project that we, we did.
Yeah, and I know in the workshop, we did provide a, um, an assessment rule for the project that was approved. Um, I don't have it in this packet. Um, but yeah, that had a, had some information. I, uh, as far as overlap, I don't, I just don't have that information at this moment. Um, who already paid us this, so.
For me, that's something I'll need to see.
If I recall, my, my project cost, I think was about, I don't know, eleven to thirteen thousand.
Okay.
So for me, I would say option two. You look at the dollar amounts. But I, that's just me going off what we talked about. Option two or three would be similar.
Yeah, I, I tend to lean that way also. Yeah, like I said, I gotta see final numbers. Um, I did drive up. I know at one last meeting, we did talk about maybe not doing curb and gutter along, um, some of the road there. I, I still want to revisit that also. Um, it just makes sure we're, you know, get a decision on that also. So Maggie, are you looking for more, are you looking for something specific here or just kind of a general idea of where people are leaning and, and some initial thoughts?
I guess that would be a, I know, um, I know Bolton and Mink is kind of looking for some guidance as to, um, just for assessment purposes, because they need, they need to know, uh, and maybe we can table it until I, um, another meeting that we have in December. Uh, they just need to know numbers so that they can start planning for, um, like workshops and, and just kind of how we're gonna finance the projects. Because I think we have to start some work, uh, in January on this project. So, um, just trying to get an idea, uh, further direction, um, kind of what additional information you need, um, for us to bring back you, I guess, if you're not comfortable making a decision tonight. Um, we can definitely get the previous assessment information from the last project to you and then, Jeff, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think you're just looking for a decision about how we're gonna do assessments, right?
Yeah, it would be to finalize the report, um, with the assessive, assessment method that you prefer. So, and we definitely can table this. We don't have to make a decision tonight. You can, um, direct me to finalize the report with multiple options. Um, whatever you prefer. I, we just, uh, we have three options here and if, if you preferred one of them, that's how we would finalize the report. If you want to wait, we can do that too.
I'll make a motion that we table it until we get the numbers that the mayor was requesting. I would like to see those as well.
All right, we have a motion to table it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. A second. Any further discussion?
Um, can I just also, one of the things that's going around in my head too is, are, like, I'm a little bit concerned about setting a precedent. Like, are we going to start picking and choosing how we assess each area, each situation in town? Or are we going to try to set a precedent? And that goes as far as the curb and gutter. You know, at one point, we were, we had a policy and we wanted to set our precedent and that's the way we were gonna do the streets. And I'm not saying that I'm opposed to, um, changing that. I'm just saying that it's something for us to think about and consider. Like, how are we gonna go forward with the rest of, um, the projects that we have planned? As far as assessing and the policy on how those streets are gonna look and be constructed.
And then I would just add on to. I'm sorry, Mike. I would just add on to that. I would just add on to that. Here we are looking at, I understand these costs are pretty high, but we're gonna displace those costs by everybody else in town paying for that as well. So, want to think about that as well.
Right, and we've talked about that in the past, like on, on the streets that are on the main, off of the main street, you know, everybody in town uses second street. Everybody in town uses third street, fourth and fifth to the, um, to the west of town. Not necessarily the east. And when we did that, when someone, some other council did the four-street project, you know, it was, they were adamant that. you know, it was, they were adamant that it was done a certain way and, um, the assessments were done a certain way. So I ju, I'm not saying that we shouldn't change it. I'm just saying that it's something that this council should probably consider, um, looking at and thinking about the future. Because, you know, are you gonna, are you gonna make a different set of rules every single time? Nikki, I would be interested to know how you and your group of people feel that, um, you know, you were made to pay the full assessment and get the curb and gutter and blah, blah. Where now we go to a different part of town right next to you. And, you know, we're kind of changing the, the rule, the precedent. That's the only thing I'm kind of concerned about right now. Well, that's not the only thing, but that's like, just something that's rolling around in my head for the future.
I mean, for me personally, I wouldn't necessarily, um, be upset about the percentages. It would be more, um, the cost. I mean, you know, you're not really comparing apples to apples, but I would say that if they were paying similar to what I paid and it was similar process, it wouldn't bother me if I felt they were getting, yeah, I mean, for me, I'm more at the like, what is the total cost for that homeowner? Not necessarily what percentages and who paid what. Um, we just, in our project, had more homes that were able to absorb the costs for the a hundred percent part than.
Absolutely, and that's what you're going to get all the way through town. So, um, you know, it just suggesting that policies or precedents be looked at going forward.
Right, and, and I, I tend to agree, Tyce, with what you're saying, especially on how we're building these roads. And that's why I sit with curb and gutter. And I know we had some discussion of not having it on the north side of the road. I, I feel we should. I think that's something that should be done, just to keep that standard of what our roads would look like. Um, but I do think this is a, a little bit of a unique situation. Because like Nikki said, there's just so few houses on this road. I can't, I can't remember back when we did the east side project, why we didn't include this road in, into the entire one and why it was left out. But, um, i- i- but here we are today, nonetheless. And, um, I, I see what you're saying about the precedence and changing thing and changing our, but I, I kind of look at this as a unique situation.
At the same time, if you look at the rest of the town, it is a unique situation and they're more spread out all throughout the whole town. You know, all these little, uh, roads off of twenty-five to the west have very small amounts of people who are on those roads. But those, those projects needs to be, need to be completed too. Um, we, remember Canary? We talked about this and we, Canary desperately needs it as well. And we talked about changing things. It, it's just a suggestion to maybe, um, look at your policies and set your precedents and, and keeping in mind that some of, most of these streets don't have a ton of people to pay for them. And how's that going to get paid? And how are you going to make it so that it's fair, uh, for the rest of the people? And especially the few people that live on those smaller streets.
Right. Okay, any further discussion?
No, I think Maggie is, you know, when we have the discussion again, is to bring up the previous one, which I know we talked about. And then any of the homes that had to pay for that other project to make sure we can line them up to say, well, they paid this amount the last time.
I mean, I would suggest a work session too next time, because I think there's a lot more discussion that has to be done about this. Not just this portion of the project, but you, you also got to think to the future. And, and how are you going to handle every, all the rest of them? I just would work session it.
Yep, I agree with that.
Have we heard from the homeowners saying that they want this looked at or that they have a problem?
Do they? No, nobody has contacted us, because we, we haven't presented the, I mean, besides presenting it at a council workshop, we haven't really reached out to these properties yet to explain.
I, I think that's important. I mean, I let one of the homeowners know about it.
Yeah.
Not that, not that they, we need to email, but we should be sending them a letter to say, these are part of the discussions and we'd love to have you part of the discussion.
And that will happen, um, yeah. So it, it, this whole process includes open houses and, right, Jeff? Like, I mean, the process includes, um, getting the residents involved before this is all completed, so.
That's correct. And then the question, so the process, we do have to have a public hearing. And then the question is timing. Do we want to hold an open house before we have the public hearing? Um, but that's a discussion we can have at a later date. But we would definitely, we, we, we have to have a public hearing and we would have an open house.
So then we would be making the decision to lower this somehow after the open house?
Well, it would be, the, the final decision would be made when you adopt, um, or when you accept the feasibility report. The feasibility report will have the assessment method in it. I'm, I'm just trying to think through here how it goes. You'll accept the feasibility report with the proposed assessment method. Um, and I do believe you are allowed to change that throughout the process. So what would happen? You adopt the method, we go through the project, we do it, we get final costs. Then we get to an assessment hearing after the project, that's right. After the project, we get to the assessment hearing and you adopt the assessments. At that point, you can decide to adjust the assessments if, say they're too high and you don't feel like we can prove the benefit. So I kind of got jumbled up there in the beginning. Did you follow what I was saying?
I did, thank you.
Yep, yep. And that's something to keep in mind too. We do have to prove the benefit on some of, so if some of these assessments do get so high, we just have to keep that in mind too. All right, any other discussion on that? All right, we had a motion and a second to table it. Uh, we'll vote by roll call, Boater?
Aye.
Stephen McPatten?
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five zero to table the street improvement project. Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Maggie, now that'll take us to seven D one, Public Works Department Lead position.
Okay, since the, no, uh, first meeting in November, um, staff, uh, council did approve moving forward with creating a job description for a public works lead position. Um, and then also send it to, uh, David Drones, which they did our, uh, two thousand and eighteen admin study. Um, they, what they did was they reviewed the job description and then they, um, uh, classified the job and then also created a range that, um, that we will again assess tonight. Um, so just a little bit of background. Um, this is, the goal of this position, um, is to, uh, create a new position within the union. It would then be to offer a promotion to the current pro, public works worker one employee. Um, there has been discussion, uh, within the personnel committee, um, about, uh, uh, taking that five thousand dollars that is a lead or is an assignment for the wastewater, uh, and water utilities, um, taking that and incorporating it into the salary or keeping it separate. Um, we did, the, the personnel committee is recommending keeping that separate still at this time. Um, so that would be part of the negotiation, just to keep, well, just to keep that separate. Um, the hourly salary, uh, I, I showed the current ranges for the public works worker one. Um, I did provide the job description for your review. Kind of what we're proposing it to be split between, um, currently the public works worker one is split twenty-five percent evenly. And then I did show the new, uh, range that David Drones did, uh, provide for the lead position, which is a little bit higher than the current public works worker one, that, um, position. And then, um, the personnel committee is recommending using that range for twenty-twenty and then, uh, right, or, and then a three percent increase for twenty-twenty-one. So, um, the next step is to approve the job description that has been written and then, uh, allow staff to then reach out to the union. We do have to follow certain steps when it comes to the union, because, um, so it would be to propose this range from the city, uh, uh, to the union for this position, and then it has to go through negotiations. So they do have the ability to, um, accept it or reject it. Um, and then at that time, we would then, if, after negotiations, then we would be able to offer a promotion and then, um, establish a salary uh, within that range at a later date. Um, if you, I, I did provide some information, um, in the attachments. Again, the job description that we're looking to approve tonight, the proposed range to negotiate with the union. And then I'm also recommending, um, just, uh, not just this item, but some items on the workshop that we, um, consider holding a December twenty-first, uh, council meeting to kind of keep working on some of these, this item and then another item, uh, to, with the goal of, um, just moving, keeping this process moving along. Um, so that's kind of where we're at right now. Um, I am available to answer any questions. Again, we have to work with the union and follow a process, so that's kind of where we're at right now.
Just to give a little more background on that from the personnel committee, um, just because the last time we talked about, if it counts, so the intent was to roll in that five thousand dollars, uh, stipend and have the job, uh, part of the job description would be to operate the plant. What we decided, we didn't want to handcuff ourselves in some of the discussion, I, I think it was even from Stephen McPatten on that, was we didn't want to handcuff ourselves into having that, that work become a union, uh, part of the union, uh, job, some of the union work. So if we do want to create in the future here, which is our vision, is to create a supervisor job, which would not be in the union, then we would take that work and roll that into the supervisor jobs. Because we can't take, so if we leave it as it is now, right now, we're not taking work away from a union employee. So that's where that, um, discussion came from and why the recommendation was to leave the five thousand dollars stipend for now. It gives us a little more latitude, uh, for the future. So with that, any, any other questions for Maggie? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the job description as it was presented and to allow the administrator to negotiate with the union for this lead position and a grade fifteen position with the range of twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents to thirty dollars and ninety-two cents.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call, Boater?
Aye.
Stephen McPatten?
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, and that will take us to council reports. Eric, anything you report on?
I have nothing.
Tyce?
Uh, no, mine should be coming up with the fire station.
Perfect, Nikki?
Uh, we didn't have a park board meeting, uh, we just didn't have enough people. And then, but we did do the tree lighting and I think we had like forty-five people live when we were doing the tree lighting. So that was, um, that was exciting.
Great. Great, I appreciate Nikki, you standing in for me. I had to leave town at the last minute, so I do appreciate that. Liz, anything to report on?
Uh, community ed meeting this Thursday evening.
Wonderful. Okay, and I have nothing to report on. I just want to thank, um, Andy, uh, Chief One and the entire fire department for the parade with Santa. It was a great, it was a huge success. Um, a lot of great comments from the community. Um, so I do thank you, uh, and if you can thank the entire, um, team, uh, they did a great job.
Agree.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And with that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. Uh, Boater?
Aye.
Stephen McPatten?
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. We are adjourned five zero. Before we roll into the workshop, does anyone need a, a few minutes for anything?
We sure do.
All right, we will, we will call the, uh, city mayor, city workshop meeting to order. And we can start right off with fire station bids, Maggie.
Okay, um, so, uh, as you know, um, and I did send you, uh, previously, um, this information. We did have the bid opening on December first for the fire station or proposed fire station. Um, we did receive nineteen bids, um, where, and that is, the information is included on the attachment. Um, that includes the bidders, their base bid amounts and then the alternate amounts. Um, so the low bid, um, for the base construction portion of the project was from VCI Construction in the amount of two million, six hundred seventy-five thousand. Um, they were contacted about their bid and they have signed off and stand by their bid. Included in the bid beyond the base construction portion were seven alternates. Um, I, I can go through them. Um, it, oh, okay, alternate one is two additional bays. Alternate two is a, a different roof. Um, alternate three is adding carpet and epoxy flooring. Um, alternate four is adding hot water into the floor heating sys, or in-floor heating system. Alternate five is if there is two additional apparatus bays added, the cost of adding that in-floor heat. And then alternate six is labor and materials for upper cabinets in the kitchen. And then alternate seven is an automatic temperature control system. It's just a different type of system, um, that was put in the bid. Um, so after, after the bid opening, I did send this information out. I did post it on the website for review and comments. Um, fire station committee did meet on December seventh to review the bids. Um, the fire station committee, um, did recommend, or is recommending to council the first six alternates. They agreed to leave alternate seven out. Um, so, uh, the recommendation are, uh, the alternate priorities are as followed. I'm going to read those quickly. So, um, with that, I did, uh, I did provide a fire station cost breakdown. Um, so this is with the. So this is with the base construction only, with that base bid. And then the other fees that we are also responsible for. So the architect fee, the inspection, testing that we have to do for soil, building permits, FFNE contingencies and civil engineer work. I did also want to mention that the sale of the, when we bought the property in two thousand sixteen, that was a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. That would not be included in our financing. That's just, just wanted to provide that information. The other scenario is if we did all alternates and then included all the other information as well, other options as well. It also includes not just the alternates, but an epoxy floor option and the bays, a generator and a generator. Financing the project, I do have Todd Hagan with Ellers on tonight. So attached are two market rate bond options from the construction bids. So it's, what I provided him was an estimated low cost. It did go down a little bit, but it's based on what I projected to be the low cost last week without some final number, without the final, final numbers and then the, the projected high. So I just wanted to give you an idea of what the tax impact would be for the lowest and the highest estimates. With that, we do need to move forward with kind of our, I did send you the bond schedule that I, that Todd did supply to me today. So we're hoping to do bond closing or get the process going. And then our final bond closing, I think, will be on February eleventh of next year. So next steps would be to discuss what, discuss approving the project and deciding at what cost it will be. That'll include deciding what alternates, if any, should be included in the project. I am, this would be another item I am recommending for a special council meeting on December twenty-first. Not December twenty-second, December twenty-first, to approve the project with or without alternates. And then this would allow us to then meet at our regular meeting on the twenty-eighth to, to work on financing the project and also getting the contract with the contractor established. So with that, I did provide all the information in the packet. I'm available for questions. I also have a spreadsheet that Nikki created to help us with our discussion. Nikki, do you want me to do this or do you feel comfortable with your, doing your spreadsheet?
Well, if you wanna, you wanna just put it on your screen and then if we find that's difficult since I made it, I can, it's pretty easy to what. My whole goal was, I wanted to see the project and I wanted to be able to easily like add and subtract things and try to get a number. So I just created this. I did see one error that the priorities two were flipped. So do you wanna, I can just quick speak to it really quick, just so if, if we find that it would be helpful. If it's not helpful, then we don't have to use it. I just, it was helpful for me to kind of get a feeling for what the total project cost would be.
Yeah, that's fine. Maggie, did you, did you send that out to us, Maggie?
I did, in an email, yeah.
Was it a Word document or, I got so many. It's an Excel, oh.
All right, why don't you?
That's yours, Nikki?
Why don't you? Maggie, can you show it?
Can you not see it right now? Oh, interesting. Okay, let me see what is happening.
You gotta change your screen over, yeah.
All right, is that it?
Yep.
Yeah, there it is.
So I'll just quick make a couple notes and like I said, we can scratch it or whatever. I kind of just put some stuff in here. So I started with column E is the base and I put the base bid. Now, I, I have some questions on this eight percent on what it was calculating at and what we've paid. So that detail is to the right, so I'll, I'll walk through kind of where we're at on that. As I had some questions that I'm not sure if Brunton's on, on the line to answer my questions, but I, I put we've already paid out or approved to pay out, if you scroll up, Maggie. Because I think that's just important to know what's already been paid.
Yep, and I know Tom is on.
Yep, I'm here.
This is like per the contract, what we've been paying over the, over, throughout the year. So, and Tom can go through kind of the, what that eight percent is based off of, if, if more questions. But I just wanted to tell you that right now, we, we have been paying for this out of the fire capital fund with, just with the intention that when we do bond for this project, that fund would be reimbursed.
Um, can you scroll up real quick? So anyway, this is more of a plug and play spreadsheet. Can you go all the way to the top and then to the right?
Yeah, sorry, this, the left?
Yep.
Oh, wait, here, right?
No, you know what, if you decrease it to like ninety percent, we might be able to get it all on one page. Down at the bottom. Well, we decide, make sure people can read it. But, you know, you have all your, are your parts that we can't really change in white. Then you've got the epoxy floor and then all the alternates. And I think the rough was priority number four and the carpet and epoxy floor was priority number five. So I just have those flip-flop from what was in the packet, so I apologize for that. But that was just so that we could put in, say like, okay, what if we did alternate one? What is our final project cost going to be compared to what the highest if we did all? So I just did that because the Word document, I, I didn't have a way of like seeing everything all in one. And I wanted to be able to play around to where things were. So my question was, you know, what is on the invoice from Brunton? Eight percent was based off of this higher bid number, which would have put it at two thirty-six, but eight percent, you know, is, what's the eight percent off? If the eight percent's off the low bid cost, that'd be two fourteen. But according to our records, we've paid two seventeen. So is that all together? That's where I had a couple of questions. And then I'm just going to throw, oh, is, I wanted to just make sure that we talk about what are we going to do with the old fire station? So that, I, I've been just thinking about this a lot and trying to figure out where I want to be at an end number for me personally. And could we possibly look at what, that sale price of that? We don't know what it would be and it wouldn't happen until twenty-twenty-two, most likely, if we don't want to keep it. But could you use some of that money? But we can go into that, I can, I have a, I had a thought on that, but I don't want to go into too much. But that's how my spreadsheet works. I thought it might be easy for, you guys want to play around with it yourself, because you have the file. And it's just a really easy way to like, oh, well, what if we didn't do epoxy floors? Or what if we don't do any alternatives? That's what we're at. Just was easy for me to do, think about it.
I appreciate that. I think that'll be useful. I just haven't had a chance to look at it yet. I'm not sure when it got sent out. Um, Tom, Tom, could you give a real high level overview on each of these alternates? Just so we kind of have a little understanding of each one?
Sure. So alternate number one, can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Alternate number one is adding the two additional bays to the end of the apparatus bay. So basically making your apparatus bay going from eight bays to ten bays.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, that, that moves everything out. It's basically the entire change to, for site work and all that. Alternate number two is going from a ballasted roof system, which is ballast means uh, stone, going from a ballast stone roof to a fully reinforced glue-down roof. So that basically the reason the cost is different there is that the ballast, the rock that holds down the roof membrane and it takes a lot less labor to do that versus a, a roof where you glue down every layer of it.
Is there a benefit, is there a benefit, one or the other? Or, you know, from a maintenance standpoint, is, is, you know, replacement standpoint? Are they both about the same amount of years we get out of them? How, how do they differ from that aspect?
They're, they're the same, same warranties, same lifespan. Um, the difference is that, the difference is the rock on a roof, I don't know if anybody's familiar with, with a ballasted roof system, but it can be, can be more difficult to find a leak. The rock can tend to move around over time. It's not a bad roof, but there are some, you know, negative things on that side when it comes to the maintenance side of it.
Well, I can just interject here and maybe Andy or someone else can remember better. This was an alternate that the committee initially hadn't considered. But Brunton put it in there for our consideration and for the bidding process. And he was pretty adamant that it was important. I mean, there were, there were good reasons why at the time. Mostly it had something to, a lot to do with how the roof would be used. If the roof would be used from, by the fire department to get on it and repill and use it for training, then it would leak.
Yeah, I can talk to it a little bit. So the fully adhered, you know, is, is all glued down, does not have the rock and stuff on it. If you were to be walking around on the roof, you know, on the ballasted roof, the one with the rock, you do present a love kind of piercing that, that rubber roof by, by walking or moving around on that rock when doing it. There is, you know, some, we do have, you know, on the project, there is some, we have some roof kind of tie-down systems. So if we're to do some or even train on repelling or something like that, there may be instances, but we're going to be up on that roof for training purposes and stuff like that. So then, you know, it kind of, it does present that risk of if we were to be walking around on that ballasted roof. What was that?
There's things up there that need maintenance as well, that people would have to walk on the roof for?
Yeah, there is some roof units that are going to be on the roof that will have to, you know, as far as maintenance and stuff like that for those. Uh, there is some walkways that they have put on there, that they put over the top of the, the stone. You know, a few walkways to kind of get to those units. But then you got to kind of mainly stay on those walkways. I did speak to a, kind of a commercial roofing guy and just asked his opinion on the two. And, yeah, he, he felt that, you know, the fully adhered is, you know, a much better roof system.
You anticipate doing training, being up on the roof?
I do anticipate, yeah, I would like to be able to, you know, utilize that. You know, when laddering up to a, a second story or stuff like that. Getting off, you know, so climbing up the ladder, getting off, you know, onto a roof and stuff like that. I, I do anticipate that happening, yes.
Okay, so I assume this balanced the, the roof with the rock on it. And I think that's similar to what we have here at City Hall. They're made for some, they're, they're made definitely for some movement up there. I mean, maintenance of rooftop units and things like that. It's just if we had all that extra heavy traffic, if you will, from a training where we maybe don't want a lot of traffic up there, correct? That, that would be the negative side of it, where we could poke through or the rocks would start puncturing the liner, correct?
That is, you know, and if, I mean, the other, I think downfall to it is, you know, even, you know, if, whatever the case may be, you get a leak, you know, whether it be from that or not, it's very hard to locate that leak with that type of a, a roof. And I, I don't know if it's a little bit more labor intensive than to, to find a leak versus the fully adhered is, is, is easier for repair.
Right.
You know, is this something that's a, a real high priority for me? I don't know that it's a high priority. Uh, there's a lot of other stuff I'd rather see, you know, before that. And so that's kind of why it's down the list on our kind of prioritys.
Okay.
We would have this original roof, the ballasted roof, and down the road, we want to replace it with an adhered roof. Is that a possibility? Is it a big deal if we do that?
Are you speaking to me, Tyce?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, yeah, of course there is. It's a matter of taking off the old roof and, you know, demoing it off and putting on a new one at that time.
So it's much more than what it would normally be to replace a roof in twenty-five, thirty-five years or whatever.
Um, not necessarily. You could replace with the same membrane and put the rock back down with this system.
With an adhered or an updated roof?
Well, so, so keep in mind that the fully adhered roof is, every layer is glued. So think of the, so there's a, a vapor barrier that goes on, it's glued down. And then there is one layer of insulation that is glued down to the concrete. And then there is another layer on top of that, the tapered, and then your membrane glues down to the insulation. So that makes up a fully adhered, meaning that every lay, level is, is glued together. Whereas the ballast system is, all that insulation is laid loose. And then the membrane sits on top loose and the rock sits on that and holds it on. So, so that's what you see, that's why you're seeing the cost difference again, is it's really the labor involved. And it's much quicker to do the roof without having to glue it together. So, I mean, at that point, when you replace it, you can either, one, take off everything there and do a fully adhered roof. There's nothing wrong with that. There's no reason you can't do that in the future.
Well, talking to that roofer, he had said far as after twenty, twenty-five years, to extend it to a fifty-year is easily done on an adhered one. So in the long run, he says, you're cheaper doing the glued-down system. Because they got
Okay.
An elbow, you know, far as repairing it, or not repairing it, but, you know, making, extending it to a longer lifetime.
So what you're saying is it would cost more to have the ballasted roof and then replace it in twenty-five years with the, extend it for another twenty-five years than what it would to have the adhered roof and extend that for another twenty-five years after the first twenty-five?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of makes sense, because the whole ballasted roof would have to be taken off and replaced, but.
And he says, on your ballast roof, you, there are chances. And he says on your ballast roof, you there are chances of it shrinking. And letting loose from your edges, but it is, you know, warranty two for your twenty years, but.
And is there, is it, is there an actual plan? I don't even know if you guys have this to actually. Use that roof for training, or is this just something that came up after we started talking about the roof?
Um, no, there is, we do have um on the roof. We've got specked out that there is a a tie off, more or less a, an anchor point. Um, on the roof that we can tie off to for whether we do repelling off the side. Or uh tying off a ladder to it or something like that. There is a an anchor point that is on uh, you know, the spec of the roof.
So we've already had this planned to train off of the roof.
Yes, correct.
All right, any more questions on the roof? Otherwise, Tom, if you want to continue on, you know, again, high level on on the other alternate, alternate.
Sure, so alternate number three is to. Let me pull up my plan here. So that is to add carpet in the three offices in the meeting room. Which are currently sealed concrete. Sealed concrete really is just a fancy word for concrete with a clear sealer on it, so. Um, and then part of that, the other part of that alternate is going from sealed con- concrete to an epoxy floor. In the kitchen and the storage in the hallway corridor there.
Okay.
So, um, if there's any questions there. Move on to number four. Alternate number four is um. It's it's a putting um in-floor radiant uh heating in the concrete floor. Throughout the apparatus bay. So instead of having hanging, hanging units. Um, or at least a a majority of just hanging units. There we still have, I believe we still keep one or two hanging heaters in there, but the rest will go away. And then uh in-floor heat radiant tube or water runs through a slab and heats the slab up and uh. Uh, that's, that's the uh, the way of heating in that room. It keeps the slab warm all the time and has greater recovery times. Uh, when you open up doors, close doors, the uh, the space stays warm and also can dry out the trucks quicker. Keeping them from rusting on the bottom side. All that good.
Are they more efficient? Are are they more efficient? Will we feel a a decrease in heating costs?
Um, I believe you'll see us like. Uh, more efficient, yes. I would have to bag you dead, but. You know.
ROI.
Um, I can't speak.
Um, Mike?
Yep.
Um, speaking with Kevin Nace, he said that the um, the boilers that you'd use in an in-floor heat. Are typically about ninety-eight percent efficient, where the hanging units. Around seventy-eight to eighty percent efficient.
Is Kevin still online? Like, is he still?
Online, but he's not, doesn't have a mic.
You don't have a mic?
Do we, so do we have an idea of what the difference is, energy cost would be in a year? I mean, i- is there a significance, a significant ROI by going with in-floor heat?
Well, for every dollar that you would pay, you typically save about eighteen percent going with in-floor heat rather than your typical. Unit heaters.
Okay.
And then there are also a question on the overhead heaters, you're heating the air and. Heating, it's it's radiating up and it and they stay heated, but when you open up the doors. Those overhead heaters have to start all over again. I thought that was an.
Right.
The other day.
Correct, and as well as another factor of keeping your trucks from icing, uh from uh rusting. As quickly, which that in itself can be a, you know, can cost some money fixing those over time, so.
So is that glycol?
Yeah, it's a glycol mixture with an outdoor.
Glycol mixture? Okay. And how about repair on though? I I is there a lot of maintenance? I mean, do they, do they break? I mean, if does a pipe burst or a leak and then you gotta dig up the entire floor to get to, how does that work?
Um, as long as insulation is done correctly within the slab, you should not have any maintenance on that or. Um, I don't know exactly how many years, but it's it's well up to thirty years. So the pumps cycle through and and it's all pressure tested when they, before they put it in, it's gonna be um tested and signed off. And uh, the uh, um, the piping system that's put in there is um solid reinforced, so. I don't know, Kevin has direct more direct experience, he wants to elaborate on with that. We do it in a lot of stations, so.
So when you're in in your condensing boilers, they also have what's called an outdoor reset curve. Like, it's if the outdoor temperature is, you know, more mild, like thirty-five plus degrees. It may only have to heat the water up to a hundred degrees, and when it's colder out, so you save more. Um, by going with that. So it doesn't have to heat up the water as hot to heat that space. It's another benefit. Um, as far as maintenance goes, the boiler, uh running glycol. The, it has a, I can't remember the exact temperature, but it has a very good first protection with that. Um, maintenance on the boiler, um, it's just like your hanging heater. There's not much maintenance.
Okay, now what's the, what's the lifespan of those, uh, typical lifespan of a boiler?
Um, if they're maintained twenty to twenty-five years. Same with the, you might get more. I mean, I've worked on some that are forty years old, I've worked on some that are eighty.
Right. Very, okay. Perfect, thanks Kevin. All right, any other questions on the in-floor heating? All right, um, I think you only have two alternates left.
Yeah, give me one second, I've got to grab one. Where is that here? Apologize here, but I, I have an old first page here that I was reading the alternates off, which we added the seventh one. But anyways, seventh one probably doesn't apply. So the um, moving on here, the next alternate number five is is uh identical or similar to number four. With adding the in-floor heat, but it's basically adding that into um the added alternate number one, which is the two additional base. So if you're going with in-floor heat in the main area and you accept the uh. The alternate number one would be that cost to to run in for heating the two additional bays. And uh, moving on, alternate number six. Was to add uh upper kitchen cabinets in the, in the kitchen. Area. Right now we have lowers in the base bed. And and seven was a, was a deduct to go uh to a different uh control. System for the HVAC, which Brunton has, after seeing the small credit. Brunton strongly disagrees with with taking that credit. Thought I'd give you our opinion on that.
So your, your opinion is stick with what was bid it out?
Yeah, to not accept alternate number seven. I don't, I don't even see it on here as an option, actually.
Yeah, I think it's because maybe might have left it off. I'm, I'm understanding that though that was bid, also might have to reject that alternate. I don't. I don't know if it's to the committee just to leave it off. I.
Oh, well, it's.
Recommend it.
On the screen where we can see it there for about nine hundred and sixty-nine. If we want to talk about it more, so.
And it's my understanding, Andy, that the uh fire station committee. Is recommending all these alternates. Correct?
That is correct, except for number seven that we would not.
Except for seven.
Correct.
Talk about the cabinet. Are they, are they important to have now? I mean, I, are we really gonna be using the kitchen? Are they needed?
It's, like I said, I think we put it as an, you know, as as an altered it, because, you know, are are they needed right away? Um, you know, I I think we'll have enough area to um to store things and stuff like that. I I would, I feel, but um, just put it in there as 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 an option, you know, as depending on where. Uh, where things went, um, you know, we put it in kind of now, then everything is gonna kind of match and stuff like that. Uh, if it's down the road, um, you know, who knows whether you build up, match it up or not and stuff like that, but um.
Right.
Is it?
Good point.
That's, that's kind of the thoughts.
Good, that's a good point. Now, in your feelings, what what are your feelings now, just taking the base bid? Without, without any alternate, do you feel we've met all the needs? From the very beginning when we talked about this and we had the needs, the safety, the space, you feel we've met it based on the bare minimum?
So, yes, we, I mean, the base bid meets our current needs. Um, it does not address anything for down the future. Um, you know, with those eight bays, I I take my equipment over there. I fill all those eight bays up. We do not have any excess uh room for anything. Um, you know, excess room that uh a bay that Ridgeview could use to park a. Um, park an ambulance so that we could have an ambulance, you know, stationed in our city, I think is a very. Um. Would be a very beneficial for the community to have, you know, an ALS uh ambulance stationed in in our community. Um, you know, Ridgeview has expressed that, you know, if there was room, they would be, you know, interested in in utilizing it. Uh, so with just those eight bays, they don't have that extra room. Um, you know, we don't have extra to.
But it does meet, it does meet the the needs.
The current.
Met the needs.
Yes.
Okay. And you said you've had conversation, who who's had conversation with Ridgeview? By Ridgeview, do you mean an an ambulance driver or actually someone?
The head of the ambulance, Daryl Roddy, um, Bob Carlson spoke with Daryl about it.
Okay. Good. Now, how does that work? Right, right now there's one in New Germany, correct?
Yep.
So what, is it twenty-four seven? Is it certain? How does that, can you speak a little bit to that?
It depends. So typically, they, you know, they try and have, you know, certain um areas staffed. Now, once they kind of, you know, they go on a call, a lot of times they kind of rotate. Um, rotate ambulances around a little bit, so let's, there's one stationed up in. Uh, Watertown, and let's say that rig goes to a call and has to haul somebody. Well, typically, that area um has more calls than others. So sometimes they will then uh move trucks around. Uh, so that, you know, now there's one not in the kind of Watertown area, so then they'll rotate trucks around. Then possibly the one from New Germany would rotate to over there uh for a time peering. And so they can kind of backfill. Um, and that's kind of how that works.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, and uh, Tom, thanks for the overview on all the alternates. I think that helps.
Yes, of course.
So other questions then? Does anyone have other questions? Does anyone uh from a council standpoint? Some thoughts on some of the alternates? Um. Kind of want to start getting some of this set on what we feel. We would want to add if anything.
Well, this is Liz. Um, I have a question about the hot water in-floor heating. So Kevin, you said that there. What, like an eighteen percent reduction in cost if we went with that? Is that what you said, Kevin?
Yeah, the boilers run anywhere between ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent efficient, where your typical unit heater. Near between seventy-eight to eighty percent, so roughly eighteen percent increase. By going in-floor heat rather than your typical space heater.
Okay, so then if we were to spend that sixty-one thousand dollars. In the eight bays, wha- what would be? How long would it take to get a return on that investment with the money that we're saving?
Sounds like a good question for an engineer.
Yeah.
I can't answer that.
I just fix the stuff, I.
And my math is a little rusty tonight, so I I'm having a hard time figuring it out.
So.
I would say that.
That's a good point.
That question has multiple, it's gonna be not just the efficiency that you're saving. You know, you're gonna be saving some because it's more efficient. Um, but there's other factors in there that are just as important. The uh, an in-floor heat, um, you know, drives that floor out kind of right away, which then. Uh, is is a safety issue, um, you know, with that floor drying out instead of kind of staying wet and stuff like that. It drive, helps dry out the underneath of those trucks and them, you know. Um, you know, helping so they don't kind of prematurely rust and stuff like that. Um, you know, if you, if we have, you know, a bigger meeting or something like that. Currently, you know, if we have to, you know, we have a chief's meeting or something like that where we, we need a bigger area to hold a meeting. We have that out in our days. When those overhead, you know, unit heaters kick on, they're very loud and it's hard to even talk over and stuff like that. Where in in-floor heat, you can't hear, you know, it's quiet.
And I get that and you get that, Andy, but my concern is, is explaining it to the general public. They're, if they're gonna be looking at this saying, okay, for the eight bays, we're looking at sixty-one thousand dollars. For the additional bay, we're looking at six thousand. So we're looking at, you know, sixty-eight-ish, sixty-five and a, sixty-seven and a half, sixty-eight thousand dollars. I I just in good conscience want to know, okay, but it's uh as a return on an investment, it's gonna pay for itself in three years, five years, six years, whatever it may be. I mean, because I know like if you were to put solar panels on top of your house, they basically say you're gonna get your money back in like twelve years or whatever it might be. So I was just kind of wondering where that point would be, so it's easier to explain.
To justify it. So I, I'm sure that those, uh, I have a note by that. Um, alternate to do more research on it. I'm sure those answers are out there. It's just that we might have to dig in a little bit more as uh, as the committee and figure that out. Um, also, you know, some of those things, just some of the benefits aren't tangible.
Agreed.
But, yeah, you're right, we need to be able to justify why this is such a high priority and. You know, maybe why it's above, or why it's above some, something else, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see an ROI on that also.
Yeah.
Andy, what do we have now? What do we have current, what do we have currently?
Currently in the station, we have hanging units.
And they are horribly loud. If anyone remembers uh the dedication for Jeffrey Volmer's highway there.
Also, if you have.
I'm hope, I'm hope. I'm hope, I'm hope, I'm hoping with the meeting. Go ahead. Say that again.
If you have one in your garage, you know how hard they have to work to keep up. So I think the efficiency thing is, once we look at the numbers, we're going to see that there is probably a good ROI.
So. The one reason I made the spreadsheet is because I had some creative thoughts. And so I'm just going to throw them out there as just thinking out loud. Because in my head, I kind of have a final number that I would like to 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 be at. So what I was trying to do is how do I get to that with with doing some of the alternates? Because for me, I feel like. I looked at the alternates are things that I I have to do when I'm building it. Now is going to be a lot less expensive than waiting. So I would say carpet and epoxy floor could be done at any stage. It could be done a couple of years from now and it's. Cost may not be significantly more. I think in a second bay or the apparatus bay. That is more efficient to do now and the in-floor heating, because I'm pretty sure you can't do in-floor heating. Five years from now after you put the floor in. So that would be something that has to get done now. But would give us long-term benefits. So I'm I'm just throwing one thing out. So we've already paid. Two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars out coming from the capital fund. Now, the one question that we don't know is what are we going to do with our current building? So my whole thought, and I just. There's a lot of unknowns, but it's just a thought is if we've already paid it out. Do we really have to bond for that and to replenish that fund immediately? Because that fund is has like, it says a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in it currently. It's mainly to help for future. Things like. I think it's fire gear, another fire truck that we levy every year so that when we actually have to purchase some, we don't have to take the big hit right away. So let's say we don't, the money we've already paid out, we don't bond for. So that's. Two hundred and seventeen thousand. My numbers are a little weird on the spreadsheet only because I wasn't sure what where that, what number we need to be at. Or what that number actually will be. But right now, it's two seventeen. We could sell that building and most likely are going to be able to get. At least two hundred thousand, I would think that that value would be. And then, and we would do that in twenty twenty-two. And then you can use that sale of the building to replenish the capital fund. So what that would allow is it would allow for us to possibly do some alternates without. Changing, being closer to that two point eight for the the actual cost of it with alternate, alternates. So that's kind of, it was just an outside of the box thought process. I just was throwing it out there and that's why I created the spreadsheet. So you could see if you deleted the architect fee, what you're bonding out, because for me, at the end of the day, it's the final number. But that's just me. So I'm just throwing it out there. I know there's a lot of unknowns with selling a building. And what would the market be? What could you sell it for? I know we have to rezone it. Does Public Works want it? You know, that kind of stuff. So I I was just throwing out something creative.
Oh, thank you. Maybe it's now, you know, before we get into too many elsewhere, should we have Todd talk through some of the finance part? Maybe to the option of the base price versus, you know, the worst case with all the alternates so we can kind of get an idea where we're at there. Do people, you guys want to see that now?
I I mean, I would because that's going to really help me make my, also make my decision. And maybe help me understand the impact on the high and low end. The tax pay, the tax impact and my, for me, the biggest concern is not necessarily next year or the year after, but it's. Five years down the road. Are we going to be in a position where we actually have to then raise our. Our levy because of this. Due to a whole, you know, different factors that we can't control now. So can we be, can we make sure we make a good financial decision now that? Even if we, you know, that three hundred thousand could make a difference. Yeah, maybe it's only a tax impact of ten dollars per household. Then ten dollars could make a huge difference. Five years.
Right. Yeah, so I think that's now a good time. Let's have Todd kind of get a little overview on some of the. Finance part of it. And then we'll start discussing some of the alternates.
Great. And can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yep, we can, Todd. Thank you.
Todd, can you see the sheets that I that you sent me?
I can see the sheets that you guys are just talking about.
Is it the, is it your estimated tax impact? Oh, okay.
It's Nikki's spreadsheet.
I'm I'm still working on mastering this. Okay, how about now?
Yep, that looks good.
Okay, so this is the lower one, Todd.
Yep, got the lower one and we got the 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 high higher one without alt seven in it. So congratulations for getting nineteen bids. Wow, that's that says a lot. The market was hungry out there for you. So bond.
Maggie, can you make it bigger? Fill the screen.
Okay, let me like this?
Yep. Can you go, can you go one more and see if it stays on the screen?
Is that? That work?
Thank you.
Yep. So so the good news is, as far as we can tell, you know, the bond market's at historic lows. So from what you guys saw in August, if you look up at that upper left-hand corner of average interest rate of one point six two. We were probably thirty basis points higher than that at one point nine two. So rates have gone down in your favor, you know, so that's good to know. I think a lot of this plays into, you know, sort of the the budget you guys are talking about. And so I did, you know, I did one. At the, at the three point three two million for bonds. And then I did another one at three point eight three. And I think the first one, I was probably a little high. This is probably a little on the high side, like Maggie had said. I think I was financing three point two to six million, something like that in the first one. And then the second scenario is probably closer. I was probably financing three point five three three. Instead of three point five six eight, so that was probably a little bit closer to the to the higher one. From what I could gather, I'm just kind of wondering if, you know, these tax impacts. You know, there there isn't even a tax impact. From what I could gather from, you know, your TNT hearing earlier. You know, your tax levy went down, right? And so if you look at that forty-nine point three six four percent. Payable twenty twenty without proposed bonds. In that upper left-hand corner in the property tax information box. That's gone down, I think, forty-eight point something. So, so really, you know, I'm I'm thinking that. You know, I'm not, I'm not seeing a tax impact because I think Maggie's already got around seventy-five thousand. In there for the levy, which is probably twenty thousand more than we might need, you know, when we sell the bonds. Even at the higher project cost. So I don't want to say you got the perfect storm here, but I think you might have the perfect storm here. And and I don't, and I don't think I see a tax impact on here. Now, this was, all things being equal. Seventy-five not being on yet, you know, keeping your tax rate at forty-nine point three four six. So it bump up to fifty-one point seven three four, then you'd have an impact. But with the seventy-five in it already, you know, in your hearing, in your, you know, levy. You're, you've knocked it down to forty-eight point something, if I remember that presentation. So. You know, maybe this tax impact isn't even one we look at anymore, which is a good thing.
And you're saying that because we budgeted for.
Yeah.
For that amount for twenty twenty-one. Okay.
And and yeah, and it didn't, it didn't go up, right? It went down even with this, even with the levy in it. So that was some pretty good magic you guys were were making. So, so, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm thinking you could go, you could, you could take the. The large one with all all six alts on it. And, you know, if if the market holds firm and everything's good, I mean, we even have twenty. Thousand more dollars of levy to play with if the market goes kind of swings the other way. But if you look at at the top here. In that, I don't know if you took, if you. On my, on my bond runs, I even have twenty basis points more, you know, in the interest rate even right now cushion. To kind of allow for, you know, market rate movement between now and. You know, the end of January or whatever. So. So I'm thinking it's, we could, the reason why we're able to do this is because we thought about it, right? We thought about. Wrapping this bond issue around some levies that were coming off, remember? So. So it's not just a, you know, a fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollar levy. It it. It's delayed here. You can see there for a while. And in twenty twenty-four, one bond drops off. So we put this one in its place. And then we increased this levy a little bit more in twenty twenty-six because another bond's dropping off. So, you know, we've already accounted for. You know, levies dropping off as well. So. I mean, all things being equal, yeah, it'd be a tax increase somewhere down the line, but we're kind of keeping what's there on and just adding a little bit to it now. So.
Yeah, and I can speak to that a little bit, too. I know we've talked about this in the past about wrapping debt. And I know we've provide, I've like spreadsheets and long-term plans have been sent out as well showing. That even with our, this project and the street projects that we're proposing in the future. We're being strategic enough where we're taking the debt on. In a way that new debt, other old debt is falling off. And so our. Our projections of everything stays pretty consistent with growth that. Our tax rate really shouldn't fluctuate too much. That's that's a projection based on current numbers, so.
Yeah, and you are lucky, you know, you're a lucky community that way, a growing community, let's say, that you have that luxury. Of a growing tax base. So your net tax capacity increases too. So. You know, I I think at a point, you know, there's going to be a street project. It could be the next one. You know, we're we're doing the wrapping we can right now here. But, you know, the public improvements that are coming up with special assessments and. You know, water sewer revenues kind of helping. There's going to be a levy on those too. And 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 we talked earlier that. That those will be the ones that probably add on, if anything, to the rate, you know. We usually only do this once, every once in a while, so.
And Todd. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that those, the. Oh, never mind. I'm sorry. Nope, you're right. You're right. I just had a. My brain wasn't working correctly. What did you say?
Yep, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, you're right. I I just missed that for a second, so.
So I guess, you know, the long and the short of it, you know, I'm not seeing a tax, you know, rate increase or an impact. Because of, you know, what you've done financially here with your budgeting. And then how we've sort of tailored this to. Existing debt, right, dropping off. And then, you know, you got some really good bids on the project side. I'm hoping to get really good ones on the bond side because, you know, our our bond environment is has been really, you know, going great guns as well. So, I mean, we're doing lots of refinancings and they seem to be moving fine. I'm not saying that that, you know, is going to happen forever and. You know, things could change, you know, we don't have. It's like the architect and engineer throwing out project bids. We just do the best we can with what we know right now and looking into. What crystal balls we have, but, you know, a couple of months out, you know, I'm not, we're not thinking, you know, there's going to be a whole lot of change on the bond side.
And remind me, how many years were we looking at for this bond? Was it thirty or twenty?
Twenty, yeah.
There we go, twenty, okay.
So, so, yeah, we'll, we'll, and then we're going to have, we'll have a call date at about year nine. So that means we'll be able to prepay them without penalty on any day after, you know, the ninth year. Which, you know, could be twenty thirty or so. We'll try to see what we can get. Get away with here with the market as early as we can. And so, you know, if there's a sale of a building or whatever you guys are thinking to do, and if you want to throw some cash at this to bring it. Bring it down, we can do it at that time. Otherwise, otherwise a good use of like the old fire hall too is. Or you could use that for economic development too, you know, you could put it in your EDA war chest or something and kind of revolve it, right? And try to get something going. That way, it's nice to have some cash to. To to do things like that to, to incentivize private development in the city. Not knowing what you have in any fund right now that you'd be doing that with. That's that's where you you tend to sort of build up that war chest, you know, for economic development. Or like you say, or like I say, you could, you could prepay some of these bonds if you think. You know, this rate, if you could do better, you know, than what the bank is doing at that time, you know, then you can. Throw that cash at this and bring this down. But if you think that this is a really good rate still, well, then you continue to revolve that kind of money and. You know, for those types of purposes or pay cash for. Fire equipment or whatever instead of bonding for it then too. So those are kind of the options that you have with with cash, right?
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Todd? Anything you want to add, Maggie, or anything? Otherwise, we can start talking about some of the alternates.
Nope, I think he covered it well. And then I just, just again, just that we've. This does include that kind of wrapping and and like I mentioned. Following the schedule of. You know, debt falling off and such, so.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, let me know what you guys decide and, you know, on that twenty-first or whatever too, if you don't make a decision tonight. And then I guess my plan would be is to come back on the twenty-eighth and. Sort of present a pre-sell report, maybe get the bonds going from from that point on. I did make up a little schedule that kind of took a. Took us from the CIP hearing now down to the end of for closing the bond. So. Kind of give you a little roadmap of where we're, where we're headed. So, thank you.
Right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thoughts on alternates? Do we want to have some of those discussions and? We can start with priorities. We can start with any and go down the list on our thoughts. I mean, Nikki does make a good point on some of these if we want to, if we're going to do them, we need to do them at build time and some maybe can push. You know, like she said, you know, easy example with the floors, but.
Is the epoxy going? Oops, sorry. I was just wondering if the apparatus bays are being epoxied as well?
They are not currently, and so that would be something that would need to be discussed as well. If you look in scenario two, the epoxy floor option for the bays is estimated to be about fifty thousand. Right, right now, it's, I think, sealed concrete.
And what's the deal? I mean, what what is the epoxy? Is it going to give it more life? Is it what versus sealed? Seems odd that one's have been quoted from the beginning.
Good a little bit. The epoxy floor is going to be. A sealed concrete floor is going to take, you know, maintenance. You're going to have to, you know, in order to keep it like that. You have to maintain it. A epoxied floor. Um, keep it like that, uh, you'll have to maintain it, a epoxied floor, um. Won't take, you know, uh, as much maintenance to it, it's going to add a sand. Um, or grit to it for slipperiness, um, on the floor, um. You know, if there's any type of. Leaks or any type of oil leaks or anything like that on the trucks, it wipes up off of that uh, epoxied floor really nice. Um, that's going to be your kind of main, but um, you know, the added traction and stuff like that to it. Again, as a safety aspect is, uh, would be very nice. Um, it is sealed concrete floor when wet can get slippery.
Right, okay.
The sealed concrete, it only has that longevity of two to three years.
And then you reseal it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's more than just resealing it, don't you have to etch it, take it all off and then reseal it? Like you just can't keep going over the top, it has to be, there's a treatment that has to go over it and then you have to reseal it again.
I would imagine so.
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 If, if we're talking about, I totally agree with there's certain things that should, certain alternates that should be done. While we're building and for sure, I think that that is alternate one and. And then the in-floor heat, so for me, those two are probably. The two biggest, I do want to see some more numbers and some more research on. The actual in-floor heat though, before I say, yeah, let's go with that as a, an alternate right away.
I think if you, you go along with that figure, we've been doing our trucks twenty-five years, but. I think the life expectancy you're going to cut off five years, so you're. That cost, how do you figure that in that? And that you have to look at, because I've got the same, I've got the problem at my lumberyard right now. Because I've got a truck that's rusting out from the bottom and I got to replace it now and. Our one engine, if you look at it, is pretty rusty because it doesn't get dried out.
That's interesting.
So you won't get twenty-five years and be able to sell it for something, now you're going to have to. Hopefully you can make it run twenty years.
Right now, how old are the trucks that are rusting out from the bottom in the station?
Two thousand.
Yeah, they're two thousand.
Twenty years old.
Yep.
And now is that, is that a little rust or is it rusting out? It seems to be, I mean, there's a difference and.
Yeah, right?
You know, when I hear rusting out, that sounds, I, or, or is it starting to get rusted?
Yeah, if, if.
Like any vehicle would get.
Yep, I don't know if Bob is on it, he has looked underneath it and, um, you know, could maybe comment it, so I don't know if he is. Available to talk. Doesn't sound that, didn't seem that way, but um, he has made mention, um. That, uh, you know, the underneath sides of, you know, our, our engine twelve right now, um. Has got significant rust underneath it, um, uh, our, our heavy rescue. Um, that we had bought and used, um, from Iowa, that's uh, pretty much that same year around that two thousand. Uh, we just had in to get, um, you know, general, um. Uh, maintenance or whatever and serviced and, uh, you know, they had found, um. Some bolts and stuff like that that were in the suspension that were rusted off that they had to replace, so. Yes, it is something that is a concern.
Yeah, that's just, I, I don't, I don't know how we measure what's normal rusting, I mean, we don't want to give the impression we put in in-floor heating. And you have no rust on your vehicle, I mean, it's metal, it oxidizes, we get solid, I mean, we're still going to have rust no matter what underneath any vehicle.
I think for me.
This, this isn't like an end-all-tier.
No, but I, I mean, I think that the in-floor heat is something that is. Um, a huge benefit for so many different reasons, for sound, for efficiencies, what Kevin was saying. I mean, we're never going to be able to put a monetary note, my guess is it, we would save money over time by doing in-floor heat. But I also know that it's something that has to happen when we build this out, you can't. Put it in after, unless you ripped up the whole floor, I don't even think you can put it in, um, after, so. I think if we're, I, I think in-floor heat is definitely the way to go just for terms of efficiencies. And all the benefits that do come with it, the floor stays dry, you, you don't have the risk of as many falls. The trucks, it's more efficient and it will keep the bays warmer. And not flood out all the heat when we, when the trucks do go, when they do leave and the doors open. So that's just mine, as I, I'm a hundred percent for the in-floor heat. So let's have the committee get some more of those pros and cons and some more numbers. On uh, radiant heat and then if we have radiant heat, do we need other? Types of heat as well to supplement that, or is that the only thing that heats the station?
I can answer that.
Said, he had, um, they, they will still leave, I think it was. If I remember correctly, it's three hanging units, um, still in there for supplemental heat. Um, you know, as, um. It can, you know, when the trucks leave, you know, you can bring it up to temp, you know, that much quicker. Um, or stuff like that, but there would be a few hanging units in there as supplement, uh, as supplementary heat. Um, just not as many as what's in the base, that, you know, they take some of them out, there's just a few of them in there for supplemental heat.
Tom, you can go ahead.
Yeah, that, that's correct, there will still be, I believe, three of them in there, um. As supplemental heat, but the rest of the building as far as the, um, the other spaces, that's heated by rooftop units. So that's, that's separate, we're really just talking about the ice, the apparatus bays for this scenario.
Oh.
Yep, it's only the open apparatus bay areas, this, this is not, not including storage or meeting rooms or offices or. That's all controlled by your, like your normal, um, furnaces with moving air. Force there, mm-hmm.
Yikes.
But just for clarification, alternate three where you talk about carpet epoxy floors, that's epoxy floors, that's not the bay area that we were just talking about, correct?
Correct.
That's fifty thousand. Okay.
That's.
My husband said fifty thou, how come the bays weren't put on as, as an alternate? Do, do, um, did the committee not, I mean, do you guys, did the committee feel they're not needed?
Um, no, I, I feel it's needed, um, you know, why exactly it wasn't, um. Put on that initial, um, I think, uh, just for the fact that. Uh, we had a pretty good idea that it was going to be, um, you know, with, with adding it was going to be over. Um, you know, that two point eight is what we were kind of given, um. I don't think it was kind of put on there for that reason, but, um, you know, I, I do feel it would be, uh. Important and beneficial, that's why we still kind of have it on, um, that, uh, in that scenario too.
Okay. And is that something that can be done, uh, so if we seal them and then after two and a half years or so, when it wears out and we could be epoxied on?
Yes, it, um, you know, you, you can, you could always do it after the fact, just, um. Going to make for your, you know, inconveniences trying to do it while you've got your trucks and trying to use the. The station and stuff like that to kind of use it, um, you know, I, I really feel with the. That, um, when he talked about kind of the perfect storm and how low the interest rates are and stuff like that. I truly feel that it's beneficial to do this stuff now, um. Money right now is, is cheap to, um, you know, it, it's low. With the low interest rates instead of waiting, because you never know waiting what, uh, what those rates are going to be or anything like that.
Uh, I understand that.
Not to mention, I bet you the epoxy floor cost doubles if you do it later, because there's going to be a lot more floor prep involved. Removing of equipment, like Andy said, loss of use of the station for a while. Your costs can be much higher later.
Yep. Can we get kind of an idea, can, can we get an idea of maintenance on the floor if it was just sealed? You know, kind of looking at it, kind of the ROI for the in-floor heating, can we kind of? You know, if, if for every two years we have to do something, what, what are the costs of that? You know, if after fifteen years have we paid fifty grand and we should have just went with epoxy from the beginning, is there kind of a, 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 a way to get that? Or, or a, a, a sign some numbers to that?
Yeah, we can look into that.
To me, it's a safe, you know, to, to me, the safety part hits more home than anything, I'm, I'd rather spend the money from a safety standpoint. I know those sealed floors can get really slippery.
I agree.
But that's, I, I'm, I, I guess, I guess it doesn't matter if it wasn't an alternate or not, but. If we think it was around fifty grand, for me, it's safety.
So right now we have no cost in to epoxy the entire station. The alternate for carpet and epoxy is just for the front office and meeting area, is that correct? The bays aren't.
Correct, the fifty thousand dollar here is just really a, uh. Budget number of what we would anticipate it may cost to epoxy the apparatus bay where the trucks start. So the alternate portion is, is strictly within the corridor, meeting room, office spaces. For carpet and epoxy there.
I'm looking at an additional fifty that was not bid on to do the bays.
Correct. And fifty may be five thousand high, I don't know, you would have to get three to five bidders to look at it. Um, or your low contractor right now, BCI might do it as a change order for thirty-five. We threw in there seven dollars a square foot. Um, that's, may or may not be, um, you know, right on, but pretty close, so.
And we also have a contact right in Mare, don't we, that could look at this, Andy?
Sure.
Yes, that is correct.
So the committee should probably look into this too, before the next meeting and get some more solid numbers on this.
Now I'll look into those numbers.
Yeah, that'd be helpful for me.
It's probably going to cost around two dollars a square foot, dollar seventy-five a square foot for replacing. Sealed, for redoing the sealed concrete. And right now we're figuring it's about seven dollars a foot to do epoxy right now. So I think, I think if they initially seal it, it's probably closer to eighty-five cents. Maybe a dollar a square foot is what it would cost for them when they, when they do it initially the very first time. But, uh, with them having to clean it up and do different things, you're probably looking closer to that one seventy-five to two dollars. And there is, um, there's about. Uh, if you give me a second, I can give you the square footage here again, see here.
Andy, did you get a number per square foot from, uh, Randy?
We did, uh, I don't know if Rod remembers that number.
Yeah, it was like, I don't know, like. Six bucks a square foot, something like that.
I can follow up with Randy and verify, see what he has for what his thoughts are and what cost would be.
It was about sixty-eight hundred square feet of floor there, maybe you want to just round up to seven thousand.
Does that include the two extra bays or that just what the base is?
That's just the base. Uh, two extra bays is eighty by twenty, which is sixteen hundred square feet.
All right, other questions, um, Liz, Eric, do you guys have any questions you want to, or any further information you're going to want?
No, I'm good.
Nothing for me.
But I think, I think it's going to be one of those things, uh, you know, I, I don't know if we're going to come to an agreement here on what all alternative, you know. If we'll ever get to that point or if we just get some of this information and then next council meeting, we'll just make some motions and.
Um. I can tell you upfront, right now for me, alternate number one with the two bays, I would, I would not agree to that. I think that was the whole reason and selling point for this cast, um, pre-cast walls, that it's so easy to add on. And if we do that in five years, it, it's supposed to be really easy and that's what these are made for and. Even if it's five years from now, that's adding hundred and fifty-ish homes. More than we have today that would help, so from that reason, um, I, I don't see. I do see the need for expansion, I get that, but I don't think it's needed today. And that's the beauty of this building that we can blow that wall out so easily and add on and that was the reason we went with pre-cast. So that's where I stand on that.
Um, what would you think, come out tomorrow, it would be in a few years?
Well, you'd, you'd probably likely be double that cost, it's one sixty-five now, it's probably going to be at least double that.
I don't think that's really fair to the taxpayer.
All that speculation too.
Still got to tear it down. Be able to use it.
Still trying to, still trying to find that balance. I think we've met, we've met the needs, we've taken safety into account. And from that aspect, that, I mean, that's just where I stand, Rod, that's. That was the selling point of the whole pre-cast.
Well, there's.
But keep, keep, just keep in mind that there's a, a lot of demolition, there's redoing all of what's already in place. Um, so I mean.
Plan for that, uh, east wall? Um, what I'm wondering is that's going to add to the cost if you tear out that wall, like if we have utilities put into that east wall, then. That all has to be torn out and redone too, so now you're adding to the cost of just adding on. It's not as simple as taking out the wall and adding them, adding on the three walls. There's going to be utilities that have to be replaced, repaired.
Yeah, that's some of my, that's some of my concern, just from January when we were talking about this, that was the best, I mean, it was. This is the best way to go with this building because it's so easy to do and now we're saying, ah, we can't do it, it's too much, it's, you know.
Well, well, it is the best way to do it, that is a true statement, however, what we're saying now is that. So right now you've got a competitive number to add in on during construction, it's definitely going to be a lot. It's definitely going to be a lot less now than doing it in five years, that, that is a very accurate statement. It's going to likely be up or closer to three hundred or more thousand dollars.
And what I'm thinking is that with all the extra added things that are going to be on that east wall, there's unforeseen costs that would happen if we had to add on to it then. That's just something that's rolling around in my head, but I don't have the plan.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's part of that too, you know, you're correct, so.
Yeah, and that's fine, I understand. I, I, I get it, I get what you're all saying, I get it, but I disagree. Still comes down to the numbers and where we're at and how much our bottom line we're spending. And I, I understand, everything's cheaper now, I, I think, I think everyone here now is aware of that. How are you comf-, Andy, how comfortable are we on the FFE? With that number of a hundred and fifty thousand, I know at one point we were talking around four hundred thousand? If I remember right, are we, are you feeling pretty good with that number? And get everything you need? And that gets you set up with everything you guys are going to need?
Yep, and, you know, so with, with talking with, an audio visual guy that we met with, you know, he kind of gave us, you know, we kind of gave him what we were kind of looking for. So he gave us, you know, pretty good idea of what numbers are for that. And then just looking at some of the other equipment and stuff like that that we need to, to furnish it. I feel what we have will, will set us in good shape.
Good, great. Good, thank you for taking a look at those numbers, that came down quite, quite a bit. All right, any other questions on this? People want to continue to discuss it, to, to continue to discuss the alternates, or are we good for now and we think we have what we need?
I'd like to just say some quick that, so next Monday is the next council meeting, correct, then, the twenty-first?
I'm proposing, yeah, a special meeting for a few items that just, I'd like to get completed by the end of December, but.
Okay, we, we just want to make sure, or emphasize again, the urgency on, on, on choosing and, and moving forward so that this contractor can be awarded, and then a contract can get, get to them, which is part of our, our work here. We just need to know if, if we can write him a contract and what the alternates are, and what you decide on. I just want to make sure that's moving because there is a clock ticking, from the date of the bid, we, we have a little bit of time, but, but we need to get them a contract before, his forty-five days passes by from, from bid date. So just want to emphasize, now I think everybody understands that.
Right, oh, thank you though for bringing that up, and I think that's the intent of having a special meeting next Monday. Which it can, is everyone available next Monday from a council perspective? Or is anyone not available?
I don't really go anywhere because we can't, so I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Eric?
Yeah, no, I'll be here.
All right, good, good, I think it's important at full council. Okay, any other items, any other questions, any other information on this before we move on?
On the twenty-first, can I, how, how many items are on this special meeting? Because I do kind of have plans, so, I mean, I will, I'll clear some time, but it's not going to be two, two and a half hours.
Um, the, I am just proposing the fire station bids and then the, most likely the pub works position.
All right, and for that, is the fire station committee planning on getting together so that we can get some of our numbers? So that the next, whatever should be just kind of straightforward, here's your numbers, here's what you wanted to know, and move forward.
Yeah, if you, if, I can send out a message to the committee tonight to see if maybe Thursday would work?
Well, homework has to be done before we have that meeting, but.
Well, I, yeah, I know, I, I mean, I know it gives us a time crunch, but I, I doubt people would want to meet on Friday. And I don't know if we, I mean, we could try and meet before the council, special council meeting on Monday, but I don't, I mean, that, that's feasible, I can see if people are available.
If the special council meeting is for, to make decisions about this, and the fire station committee hasn't met before then, then there's no reason to meet on the twenty-first, because they will have no answers.
I, I mean, I, I think, I understand that. I know that, I'm just trying to work with Brunton right now and with Ellers to make sure our time, you know, we don't, that we stay on track, and I, I know that their input is important, so that's, I, I, again, just trying to, trying to make, put pieces together so that it, it works. So, I mean, if you want, we can even push the council meeting back to Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tyce, I will work on getting those different costs. You know, the, the maintenance costs and stuff like that, and the sealed concrete, the, the pricing on the, the epoxy, a little bit more accurate pricing with that. Also, look into the, you know, in-floor heat and kind of a, you know, ROI on that. I'll work on that and get that sent to the committee.
I can work with Andy too, if there's anything I can do.
We can try to get those numbers together for everybody.
Yeah. Think it's one of the biggest things that council needs to know before we have a meeting. Otherwise, we're going to have another special meeting with, with just the same information that we already have.
Yep, so one thing I would just like to ask or appreciate of, of council is, if there is any other questions or concerns that you have on it, that you need to know by that date, please reach out to myself, you know, or Maggie, so we can get you that information beforehand.
Right.
You know, honestly, to think that worrying a little bit about inefficiencies in heating and a few thousand dollars here about what's going to go on the floor, I don't know if it really matters. I think what matters is, is the fire department just comes forward and says, these are the exact things that we need. If we don't have these, this building is just not going to work for us.
Okay, yeah, thanks, I'll still, I'll still get those numbers for everybody. I agree, I mean, I think the, the money that, the difference between kind of the two, two options, in the long scheme of things, i- is very minimal. You know, I, I think Ellers has, has kind of said it best that there's, you know, between that kind of high and low, there, there really isn't much tax impact right now on that. You know, and I, I think we'd be doing an injustice to, to not get everything we need right now so that five years down the road, or ten years down the road, we're like, oh, boy, I wish we would have did this. Now let's look at that to redo it. You know, we kind of have that issue with the city maintenance shed right now, the city maintenance, you know, and he's, it's full, and he, you know, doesn't have room for stuff. You know, let's, let's not do that with this fire station, let's make sure that we are set for the future.
I'll add one more thing, I mean, I think, I like what Todd said because over the last few years, we have planned our budget really well. We do, we are fortunate that we do have a growing community, that we, that we are, are then able to take that growth, our capital accounts, but then also make smart decisions based on, you know, new debt and falling off debt and, and I think that's why our, we were able to get a little creative this year. And, and then with that, it shows, like Todd said, a little, or not an, a tax impact because we were able to kind of reduce in areas where we could and absorb, you know, the, the tax that, the debt that this would bring on for twenty twenty-one. And then we're able to plan strategically for the years later so that the, you know, that debt doesn't cause a big impact in the future, but then also, you know, we're going to have street projects as well. So I think we're being really, we've been really smart, we've done a lot of long-term planning, and I think we're in a really good place right now. That's all I really want to say, so.
Well, that's, that's a lot of years of a lot of work too.
Yeah, no, I agree.
We, 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 we don't have the, the luxury of a, of a huge city where we can do everything upfront and do all these things. Sometimes we do have to do things the way we're doing it, and that's why we've kept our tax rate where it is and, and helped our residents and done what's right from a fiscal responsibility for our residents. So I don't, we can't sit there and say that this is an injustice if we don't do, you know, we, we've, we've met all the needs, we just said we've met all the needs. So sometimes that just has to happen in these small cities. We couldn't have gotten a building, a public works building that may, may be wanted, so this is, that, that's working for now. And that's just how some of this has to, has to happen. You know, and, and all the work that's went into it, and where we are, you know, from a tax standpoint from Carver County, we're doing phenomenal, but it's been a lot of work and a lot of, you know, to, to Nikki's point, thinking out of the box and being creative and, and making things happen. For us to be where we are and we're the fourth lowest tax rate in the county, that's phenomenal. Compared to Chatham, Chaska, Victoria, and Maconia, and then us, that's great. So, I, I, I don't think we can say anything's an injustice, what we, we're, we're doing what we, you know, what's best too. So, I'll leave it at that, any other comments? All right, if not, then we'll move on to, let's move on to the preparedness plan then, Maggie. And everyone on the call who's joined, thank you, I appreciate it. Certainly remain on if you want, Tom, thanks for your, your time tonight too.
Yeah, thank you, I will step off, thanks for having me on, and feel free to reach out to me as well.
Perfect, I, thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, bye.
All right. Included in your package is just a, a, an updated preparedness plan. So, the personnel committee did meet and we did feel, you know, our, our previous one was passed, I believe in April or May timeframe, a lot has changed since then, we've learned a lot more. And so it was discussed about maybe updating it to be a little bit more specific, include resources and a little bit more, just more detail from what we had in the past. So, I don't, I, I, we don't have to go through too much detail, I just wanted to get it in front of you this evening, get any suggestions for changes. You, you'll see there's a lot of red, that's the added stuff. I do, most of the red is what we already had, but it's just in more detail. I did keep some black, that's what was in our current one. But again, a lot of the red is just more detail to what we are currently had. So, I just wanted to get it in front of you, get any input about changes and, and continue to work on it, so.
And a lot of that came from Maple Grove, correct, Maggie?
Yeah, so I did reach out to Maple Grove, they had a very good working document. And so I did make, I did make changes to fit us, but a lot of the ideas, yes, came from Maple Grove.
Right, okay. Any comments on there? Seemed to look good to people. Some of it too, we just beefed up a little bit about the notification process of it also. You know, just to make sure we have things set. You know, if I, if I came down with COVID, I have to turn over my powers to the vice mayor, I can, you know, I make sure I let the administrator know immediately if I'm positive and I'm, you know, or can't do things, or our emergency manager. So some of that just had to do with a, a notification of it too. Made a little more clear, a little more robust. Any comment?
If anything else comes up, just, you can send it over, I'm going to continue to work on it, but yeah, I'll likely try and get it on the twenty-eighth. So I would appreciate further review and any suggestions before then.
Perfect, all right, then let's move on to the twenty twenty-one fee schedule, Maggie.
All right, I just, I want to get in front of you some changes that we're proposing. There aren't, there really aren't too many proposes or proposals. Most significant is the utility rates that we have discussed in the past. I just wanted to give you an idea of, of what that, those looked like. I will put together another memo, just showing some examples of how it would affect certain properties. And then there's also just some engineering rates that are changing, the planner consultant fees would go up five dollars per hour. Everything highlighted in yellow are the proposed changes that I'm, that I am showing right now, so.
Real quick with water, is that with the three percent increase?
Yeah, these are with a three percent increase, in the memo I included what the previous year was.
Right, okay. And this is, this will be our third year from that study?
Yep.
The third out of five, is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a five to eight-year plan. I will double check on how long it goes, but it is rea-, I do reassess it with the, with ABDO every year. They're the ones that did it, and they're the ones that can kind of work with me on the health of the accounts and if it's based on the pro-, future projects, if we feel like it's necessary, so.
All right, thank you. Any comments on the fee schedule, and this will be, will approve this the first meeting of January, correct?
Um, this year, I might actually have you approve it on the twenty-eighth so that we can, if we do increase rates, I can get the information out to residents earlier than we did last year.
Is that, I thought I read somewhere you have to do it on the first meeting.
I think a point, I'll, I'll double check, I know appointments you do, I don't know a hundred percent about. I, I know, I think I've seen other cities do their fee schedule the year before, or the last meeting of the year before, but I will double check them.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments on that? And again, I think it's the same thing, if you see anything that jumps out, just let Maggie know with any concerns. You know, I was concerned with the three percent increase, not knowing where we were going to land from a budgeting standpoint, but, I feel better where we're at now from that, so. All right, any other comments on the fee schedule? All right, with that, then we'll, we'll adjourn. Perfect, thank you everyone, and we'll see everyone next Monday, I guess.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yep, thanks, everyone have a good night, yep.